I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic of which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Boardman Meeting on December 9th. Hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday, as we do in the next holiday season. Christmas, I hope you just have a good one through that. Hope everybody's holiday season is enjoyable, as you like it to be. Just a reminder, if there's an emergency, actually, the nearest exit, which is out the back door that way, go to your vehicles, please do not get intimate, please do not leave with them until somebody after the emergency service person arrives. It's a non-smoking building, therefore, if you must, you must do that as well. Wood minutes?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Just one approval tonight for an amended version of the minutes. The board just received the full version, as the transcription was unavailable to finish due to an emergency. So they'll be approved fully the next week. So this is just all the motions that were made in November 25th meeting.
Motion to accept as presented.
Motion.
Second? On the favor?
Aye.
The treasurer is not here, the chairman?
Okay, the bills for the period total, $274,261.11. Top five, Agile, $64,003.10.59 for the Railroad Avenue sewer line replacement. Bildra Skidmore, $60,984.66 for multiple village insurance policy renewals. SJ Hurning, $48,000.42.50 for the third payment for the Carnegie Library reconstruction. H2M, $21,006.20 for the extension of the River Avenue sewer, 300 East Main Street map and plan. And the Law Office as a employer, $15,800 for June to December 2013 council. They totaled $211,117,075. You have approval, please?
Motion to accept as presented.
Motion.
On the favor?
Aye.
Next, we have first public hearing, notice, I'm so sorry.
Nothing else with the treasurer?
No, nothing else with the treasurer.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to pay Ring Associates the amount of $12,500. This is money that was bonded, that was a bond that was put in place and put in escrow for the railroad development and redevelopment of the road.
Correct, the West Avenue, this is, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees, this is for the, this was a $625,000 bond that was placed for the improvements on West Avenue. If you recall, the improvements originally put down, it led me to hell on to the bond, they had to be removed by the contractor. The engineers had certified that they were completed, and now it's certified that they're 100% completed.
And this money is from money that they placed?
Correct, the portion of their own cash bond.
So it was going in escrow?
Yes, exactly, it was a cash bond, but it was held by us as a bond.
And then we have not, is not funding of all, but only this?
Is that something that we should release before the project is completed?
For the discreet amount of what that bond was for was for West Avenue improvements, and the engineer certified that's 100% correct. If you recall, it had to do with twice already, but now it's certified that the changes were made in accordance with our consulting engineers. So we approved it 100% for release.
Has the board seen that certificate?
Well, the board has, Superintendent Joe Dean has approved it, he wrote it, and then the treasurer has it.
I know we haven't seen it, so.
Yep.
But you'd like to see that.
I'd like the motion to approve this.
Motion. Okay. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, December 9th, 16:00 AM, 14 Baker Street, Patchogue, New York, by the Village Board of the Incorporated Village of Patchogue, to consider requests for the renewal of a special permit for the property located at 257 Waverly Avenue, United Storage. At said public hearing, any person interested will be given the opportunity to be heard, and I believe Joey's here. Hi. Good.
Name, name and address, please.
Joey Camanto, 257 Waverly Avenue, Patchogue, New York.
You know who it is? Okay, this is, how many years is it two years?
This is one year, and this is up to now.
How you doing?
Good.
Good. Yeah, I just wanted to, since it's time to renew the permit, just kind of come in and, you know, just discuss a few of the things that happened over here. I think you're well aware of the fact that we, people, you guys got some people out of there who are living there.
Yes, this was part of, I have just recently taken over the property two months ago. Everyone's taking care of it before I came into here.
Okay, and you also covered the vehicles in the back, which is good, and put up some kind of fence, covering on the fence to block that view there. So I have a question for you. There seems to be a company there, a sheet rock company. Are they still there, they still park their vehicles there overnight?
Not that I'm aware of parking overnight, there's this one gentleman that comes and goes, but he doesn't want to.
Yeah, I was just concerned about that, I don't know, is that, do you know if that's permitted in what the use of that property where, you know, business, a commercial business can use it as their parking lot? Or it's a drywall company, you're really not supposed to operate on a business avenue.
Yeah, he's not operating in business, he's just the one fellow, he's not parking his vehicle, he stores with us. He puts his equipment in there, comes in the morning, takes equipment out, comes back during the evening hours.
Is that what he does?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That's, uh, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because I've seen that going on there at night, and I'm thinking, oh, maybe he's parking there at night, or, you know. But I've seen that the vehicles parked. As long as he's not parking there, he will.
Right, right.
And you've, I guess Bill, you're not living there anymore, right?
Uh, the cable really, uh...
No, but I must say that once, when we discovered that was happening, you guys responded, whether it was you or somebody else.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure that...
And nobody has to wait for our access if you guys have access.
Well, I have noticed that the cameras that you have there record when somebody goes into the building.
Yes.
Where they go through the gate, and they put in their punch code, and that's how you can identify it's the building. But I've noticed that, I've been a customer there forever. That's why the board is joking with me, I didn't really live there.
He said...
I saw.
I thought about it. We vacationed there.
Yes, right. And you can easily leave one of the back doors without there being any...
There is a camera also in the garage videos.
Right.
And I do have, I had concerns with that myself, and I do have been coming to adjust that to angle it even closer so that I can get a better view of all of yours.
Right, because if you, if, since we came to you and asked you for a review, who came and left, and whether they did leave?
Would you tell them?
Right.
They have to push back out so we know who's coming, who's leaving.
But they could indeed leave through, you know, the door of the bar.
They could, yes.
Is there any way of getting a camera on that door?
I know we're getting additional cameras from beginning of the year.
Right.
Not sure where those cameras are going to be placed, but I will definitely look into that.
Right, I, no, I think...
The double doors there on the side, I agree with you, then I will check into that.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, just thank you for taking care of the issues when they arise, and I hope that if the board finds it to approve another year that we continue to go through the same thing, and the issues are lessened as we go ahead. Any other questions? Motion to accept and approve? Public, can you hear? Dennis, did you move back?
Did I hear him, or did I want to say something?
Did you move, did you move out?
I took Bill's place, though, he's only been there. But I think we're good.
Motion to approve and extend?
Motion to approve and extend, yeah.
On the favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, December 9th, at 14 Baker Street, Patchogue, New York, by the Board of Trustees, the Incorporated Village of Patchogue, to add section 435-81.3 to chapter 435 of the village code to prohibit the operation of hookah parlors within the village by proposed local law, copy which is on file with the opposite Village Club. At said public hearing, any person interested will be given the opportunity to be...
Those are no hookah bars. It was where you can congregate and water pipes. And New York State law says where 90% of your income is from tobacco-based products or smoking products, you can then smoke indoors. I have a real big problem. I don't smoke, never had. My father died of a heart attack at age 42, smoked two packs of Lucky Strikes a day. My sense is, is that was probably the last two nails, and it's got caught from one of those last two packs. So I, this I find very distressing as daily. And it's basically for kids 18 to 21, before they go to a bar. You can't tell me that it's not harmful to them, harmful to those with secondhand smoking around anybody closely. It's not something that I would like to see within the village that I live in. And this is the personal side, when you look at the research. It just tells you, you know, we found that water pipes, not safe, a safe alternative to cigarette smoking. Through water pipe sessions are equivalent to 11 cigarettes per day. You know, the chocolate we used to eat, the tobacco, the hookah increases health risks by producing high levels of carbon monoxide, metals, and cancer-causing chemicals. When you start having to do the research, hookah smoke contains high levels of toxic compounds, including tar, carbon monoxide, heavy metals, cancer-causes, and in fact, hookah smokers are exposed to more carbon monoxide than cigarette smokers. Like, it amazes me that, that wasn't New York State and Southern County. It says, you can't, you can't have a cigarette sitting outside, but you can sit in a room with 10 people, start basically a barter. So... This is, uh, this is what we're talking about, comments by the board? Just want to, I think, may I say 90%? I think, isn't it 10%? What percent?
90% of your income is through tobacco products.
Right, okay. 90% of, then you're allowed to do this, you know, and...
So what percentage of your product, then? So if you had a cigar place, and you sold the cigars, and 90, you can't sell that. 90% of your income came from cigars, because, in the state of New York, right? You could have a cigar cafe.
Oh, okay, so I misread, I misread it as 10%, I read something else today? I read it as 10% of the...
Well, 10% of your other sales, I mean, that's the component. But, you know, the issue here is that it's specifically about hookah pipes, hookah uses, not a cigar or cigarettes or those kind of things, but that hookah has a function, the only reason to be there is around this or syngem, that's the question. And the board has extensive researchers, we should document directly what's here, as the board's considered to.
Have you done any of the research, the other community?
Yeah, just to walk through it, you know. The board has as a basis for that consideration tonight for review, smoking from hookah not as harmless, it's not a harmless alternative to cigarettes. This, the chemicals, there's a study from the CDC, that is from Disease Control and Prevention, that details the description and the operation in comparison with cigarettes. They're at risk of the same types of diseases caused by cigarette smoking, and it's akin to a cigarette bar, a cigarette lounge. Charcoal used to heat the tobacco, and hookah increases the health risk by producing high levels of carbon monoxide, metals, cancer-causing chemicals. A number of toxic substances known to cause lungs, bladder, and oral cancers. Irritation from the juices increases the risk of developing oral cancers. A number of substance infection diseases transmitted by sharing it, that's a quote from the CDC. Also, the board is a report from Mayo Clinic, saying that it's not safer. And water, obviously, in a hookah operation does not filter out the toxic ingredients of the tobacco smoke. You also have pieces from Division of Clinical Pharmacology at San Francisco General Hospital, World Health Organization Advisory Note in 2005, which details the concerns, same concerns as well, and operations. A water pipe smoking session may expose to smoke or more smoke over a longer period of time than occurs with smoking a cigarette. A water pipe smoker may therefore inhale much smoke during one session, as a cigarette smoker will inhale consuming 100 or more cigarettes. A typical one-hour-long water pipe smoking session involves inhaling 100 to 200 times the volume of smoke inhaled from a single cigarette. And that's a quote from the World Health Organization. Let's move on with a article from the city of Costa Mesa. Their City Council General Report, April 5th, 2013, just less than a month ago. We're there, Plan Department, Code Department, recommending a similar prohibition as we had. They had, from their experience, again, because this is new to us, their experience that around the three locations they have, they observed activity which included noise, loitering, public drinking, and underage drinking, and that increased substantially in those locations. Again, it's anecdotal for us, because we don't have one yet, but again, just trying to be proactive.
And Southern County has a law that requires them to put carbon monoxide detectors, the buildings next to them. They must provide, if it's in a shopping center, businesses on both sides have carbon monoxide detectors as they need to have on the inside. I mean, you gotta have carbon monoxide detectors in your neighbor's house, even if you may have a property in your house. The interesting thing about this, you know, you said November 5th? This one, it's from April 17th, 2013, I mean, there's a lot of recent stuff that we're going back and looking at. But, and I can, the other part of that is still here. It's the smoking piece of it, but then, it's a BYOB, you can bring your own beverage, you know. So if you're over that age, you have to bring your alcohol anyway. It just seems to be out, they can do that?
Yeah.
Can I charge it for you? You've got people who can bring their alcohol.
That's a specific license, I think, but I'm not sure, it's a possibility.
No, that's what they were looking to do over in Farmingdale originally, and they put a squash on that.
Yeah, they actually think that they can do that, restaurants open, and if they don't have their license yet, they can pose and tell customers to bring your own, it's actually illegal, no enforcement.
Comments by the board?
I just got a question, what is the role of smoking with hookah pipes?
It's a social piece.
It's a social thing, yeah, I actually talk to my son, and college kids are doing this. Under, if you're under 21, if you go to a bar, you want to socialize, you're 18 years old, you go smoke some tobacco, you sit around and talk. And they're smoking, you know, they're smoking tobacco, and presumably they're drinking Sprite or something like that, but...
But you're gonna get some kind of a buzz when you're getting that much tobacco, changing your body, more than with cigarettes.
I'm sure that's true, but it's, it's not primarily for tobacco, it's hanging out with buddies, that's what it is.
There's a lot of ways to do that.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds cool, right?
Doesn't sound like a Main Street type thing, so.
Well, we're, we're all about health, I mean, that's our only consideration, we consider this to be unhealthy.
That's, that's what all the show...
I mean, that's what all of our evidence says, that's all we need to talk about.
And now by the board, comment? Motion to approve and extend?
Motion.
Second?
Second. Now with it, Bloomberg?
Bloomberg, heck, yeah. Dennis Smith?
Thank you, Mr. David. Mr. Mayor, trustees, and Cecile, very eager, ladies and gentlemen. Dennis Smith with a very brief business improvement district report. Just gonna recap some of the things that I've talked about in the past. There's not much new with the Main Street grant. We did have one project that was completed, that was over at Bales, two of these, about 45 East Main. Had a very successful opening, doing very well there. I'm waiting to get the paperwork, the invoices and the cancel checks from him. He agreed to partner on us in $20,000 with his interior improvements. As soon as I get those documents, I can find them available, and we can, we can reimburse him at least that much money. He did a great job there with everything that he did. 66 through 74, which is Rose Jewellers, and one shoe store, they're making good progress. The wall is still in the process of being demolished. There were two sub-halls that had to be put up to make that work, one to hold up the roof, because obviously you were taking the wall away. And there was another one to protect the interior on the outside that had to be framed out. As soon as that is completed, and I really don't have a concrete date for that, we're gonna start the facade, but unfortunately, we're gonna be dealing with weather now, so I don't know how quickly or how slowly that's gonna progress. We did set two additional projects up with Albany in the past couple of weeks. That's 2 East Main Street budget buy and sell, that's an interior renovation. And we also set up 46 East Main Street, which is, we know, the YST years. And that's gonna be a little bit of interior, but mostly exterior on the two facades that are facing the outside. It's the rear front walkway and the front. And both of those should start, hopefully, right after, well, at least the budget buy and sell right after January. And the order permitting, we're gonna start the YSTs as soon as we can. There are five additional projects that are out there that have been approved, but that have not yet been set up with Albany. I have not gotten all the documentation that I needed from the building owners. Hopefully, that's gonna happen in the very near future. And there were two projects now that are working their way through the application process. And that was the Olive Tree and La Isla, I spoke to that building owner this past week, and he's coming pretty close to, to being able to submit the application for the quotes and the contractor and everything else that we would need. And it was, an application just given out in the past two weeks to O'Neill's at 1 East Main Street, and they're looking to do something in the interior, so, you know, those are out there, when we get them back, we'll cast a decision on those. The sidewalks I've talked about in the past, Marion is setting up a tender meeting on the 17th of December. We're gonna try and get the owners in, and we wanna talk to them about their portion of what has to be done monetarily with the sidewalks, and then discuss how we're gonna handle that as far as taking payment and getting everything done through the one contractor, which is JCO, and just having all the cash on hand so that when the project is done, CDA will pay the portion on behalf of the village. And we wanna have the monies from the building owners in hand so we can clean it up all at once, and not have anything dangling at the end, so hopefully, we'll get, we'll get that started the 17th of this month. Just quickly, Bit website, haven't talked about that, then probably over here.
Yeah.
PatchogueBit.com, we now get on average between 400 and 600 hits per month. We got up close to 1,000 one month, so people are looking at it. And we are actually considering or exploring the possibility of selling space on there. Space being a battery at the top, and maybe some boxes on the bottom. Ideally, what I would like to do with that is maybe sell it to a commercial lending institution or a commercial realtor, so that we have people that might be looking to, to come into Patchogue and want a little bit of guidance in addition to what they can get from the website. Hopefully, we can give some names of go-to people where they can get some funding and some ideas of where they can go. So that's the work in progress, and I will go forward. Security cameras, I mentioned at the last meeting that I recorded at, we're working on pricing and camera integration. We did get some pricing for the five locations that I had alluded to at the last meeting. We're looking to, we've got, we've got new system prices, but we're looking to integrate the systems that we already have, primarily the theater and the library, I think the theater is the best bet to start with. There's another meeting that's gonna happen, probably the second week in January, with the people I was discussing, basically, Hunter Station, who's got a very successful program going out. We're gonna meet, meet at that time, and have a bit, a little better idea of what we can do and how we can do it, the funding that would be needed, and then we can decide where the funding's gonna come from, because we haven't got that part of the puzzle together yet. That's basically what I have, unless there's other questions for me. If there's nothing, personally, I have a half for the BID Board of Directors, I'd like to wish everybody here Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, a happy, safe, and healthy weekend.
Deputy Mayor? Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Kennedy, oh, you're there. May I look?
Hi.
You're right with my sister. Coffee?
How you doing, David? Very good, how's everybody? Great to be here, my report will be short as well. First, I'll start off by talking about Small Business Saturday has come and gone, and it was a great success. The trolleys, the, between Belleport and Patchogue, a few dozen people definitely rode the trolley. But we were really, for more than the people riding the trolley, it was just a buzz of having to go back and forth, and the buzz that it created in the community of how cool that was. So much so, attention that we're really seriously looking at maybe a weekend or two in the summertime doing something similar with the trolley, whether it be something between the waterfront, Main Street, or other communities in our community as well. It just, it looked great going down Main Street, really fit in to the landscape very well, and it just created a really nice atmosphere on Main Street. All the business owners tell me Small Business Saturday was, overall, was a success. There was definitely more people on the streets, enjoying the special sales that were going on that day. And then, of course, you know, I want to thank the village, the parade was, was awesome as always. A great crowd, tons of people there. And then that was followed with our annual tree lighting. Certainly, I want to give a big thanks out to the Guyer family, Cayman Guyer, the Guyer family, who donated the tree this year. And I also want to give huge thanks to Joe Dean, and Kerry Datsch, and everybody at DPW who put the tree up, looks great. Really colored, you know, the colored lights look really well, and it was great. And then following that Sunday was the menorah lighting as well, and that was another lively, song-filled ceremony as well. So if you didn't get into the holidays after that weekend in this community, I don't know what else we could do for you. I do want to also mention, you know, thank Deputy Mayor Krieger, I did the parking meter meeting with the business owners, it was really well attended, it went really well, it was great information. The technology on these new machines are outstanding, and once the work gets out to the community, I think they're gonna find that these meters are gonna be actually an asset in both controlling the parking, helping raise revenue, and, you know, guaranteeing some good parking amenities without that much of an effort, so. We look forward to doing more of these information meetings as we go along with the business, with the business community. Do want to give a shout out to Plazamac, who donated the space for us to use that day. It was a really perfect venue to have it, and very grateful that they'd allow us to use that that day. And, you know, keeping the holiday theme, this Thursday is our holiday party. We do invite you to come along, we're doing a little, I don't want to call it a pub crawl, we like to call it progressive dinner. It's the adult version, I guess. But we are gonna be traveling from Bellavino, then to the VIP Lounge, to Public House 49, and it's very good. And either you can't make the whole thing and want to just meet us along the way, we'd certainly love to celebrate the holidays with our, the village.
What time is this, sir?
Uh, 6 o'clock, so we're about 6 to 10.
Bellavina?
Yes, at Bellavina, so yeah, please, you know, everybody, come join us if you can. And one thing, certainly, I want to talk to, about this week, Village Clerk Seal, and Dennis Smith from the Beta Call, I want to arrange at the next, what we call 2-2-2 meeting of the three organizations to talk about the upcoming year. The Chamber realizes it's our time to kind of set that up and pick up lunch, so I'll kind of work with you guys in coming up with the, in the next few weeks. Thank Laurie Devils, we're really reaching out to the business community. I know you're putting together the committee to start talking about some legislation about sandwich boards. A lot of people in the Chamber...
Meeting on Thursday?
On Thursday, yep, and I know, I really appreciate reaching out to the Chamber and getting their voice involved and continuing that good partnership that we have. Then, yeah, we're already at a couple of meetings with the Live After Five Committee and the, and the Business Promotions Committee about all our upcoming summer events. January 13th, as I know the next Village Board meeting, so prior to then, I'll have a formal letter with the date request in writing, and hopefully be looking to discuss that further and see if we get those dates approved in January. There is one date, though, that I know for sure, that we at least want to get on the radar screen, because that is coming up, believe it or not, is the St. Patrick's Day party. It's always the fourth Sunday, the fourth Sunday this year is gonna be March 24th. Thanks to the advice of Village Clark... Thanks to the advice of Village Clerk Seal, Tom will be making sure that the police are on board with that date. And then certainly that'll be included in January with our package of dates for the upcoming year of events. And other than saying, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, unless everybody's got any questions, I just wish everybody a happy and safe holiday. Encourage everybody to please continue to shop local. A lot of great stores in town, you can do all your Christmas shopping on Main Street. So please come down and enjoy our Main Street and have a great holiday.
Thank you, David.
Thanks.
Great holiday, please. Is anybody else? Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brief theater report, I just do wanna report that we have accepted the bid for the theater roof. More contracting, out of Fort Jefferson. They're gonna be working with the theater to schedule when they can do that. And basically, they can get, start working on that in mid-January. So it's gonna really improve the theater, protect our asset, and I think bring back a bit of a nostalgic look to the theater, so to report that. Secondly, a few things coming up with the theater. I know I've gone through this quite a few times, but I just wanna make mention to the events that were held at the theater this weekend. Friday night was a children's play, Jack Frost, and it was wonderful. We had a lot of families there, great production. And on Saturday and Sunday was Ovation's Dance Academy. They put on the Nutcracker, which was just spectacular. Beautiful, great production, great dancing, full house at the theater on Saturday when I was there. I believe it was similar on Sunday. And the holiday season is upon us here at the theater. We've got Beauty and the Beast coming up through Gateway. And then New Year's Eve Celebration is an evening tribute to Paul McCartney with a party at midnight. And a number of other things coming up, Disco Explosion, Little Verme, Mickey B's Winter Spectacular, Ron Tynan. This year, Ron Tynan is being produced by the theater. For, I guess, nine years it was produced by the Greater.
Foundation.
Foundation. And this year, the theater is producing the show. And got a great one, The Not So Newlywed Game with Bob Eubanks coming up. Frankie, you're there, right? I don't know, but I understand this is, this is a new kind of thing with, before we, centers like Westbury did it, a number of places where they bring game shows into the theaters and they play the games. Price is Right has one going right now that's very successful. So we're trying out the theater. And one good thing about our show is it stars the Bob Eubanks, who was originally with the program. That's on, on March first at eight o'clock, that's a Saturday night. So it's gonna be a lot of fun, especially to the people more like our generation who remember the show. Price, Kid price could be very useful too. Yeah, we also have the Choral Extravaganza High School Chorus Competition coming in March. That's gonna be really.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, that is, if you enjoy chorus music, you gotta go there, it's a great show. The Queen of Pure Country is, Josie Waverly is coming in March. We got the fifth Patch of Folk Festival with Suzanne Vega, Amy Helm, and Carolyn Doctorow in March, yeah, that's cool, right? Summer of Love Concert in April. And our favorite Starshine Youth Talent Search coming up in April also. So a lot of good things coming up at the theater. A few things that are in the works that I think will be, a lot of people will be happy to know are coming up. So it looks like it's gonna be a pretty good, good.
And what about our market?
Oh, we're gonna take every space behind us, Mark. We're sort of selling them.
Auctions and demand is better.
Yeah, and you know, David mentioned earlier about our parking meeting that we had last week, which went very well. And we're moving forward with the parking meters on Main Street. I guess they're gonna be delivered shortly, right?
I'm expecting by the end of this week, early next week.
Yeah, and then they're gonna start installing them next week, putting up the new signs. And January second, they go into operation. And right in front of Bloom's, the first one.
I don't care about the front. I don't park there, I'll still people there.
We will be sending a letter out to all village residents advising them on the parking meters. There'll be a letter in the advance. We're gonna try to get the information out to people as quickly as possible. Michael, you'll also get that. And by that time, on January second, they'll be in place, be ready to go. Yes, Mark?
What about, this is very important, lighting in the back parking lot. Go back there right now, dark.
Yeah, Joe, can you check and maybe see if there's any lights that are completely out back there? I want Joe checking, and we're gonna be upgrading the lighting back there.
You want people to walk out there to their cars?
Yeah.
My girl.
It's been an issue and we're gonna be working on that. Once the, you know, parking meters get into place, the money that's coming in is gonna be used to, of course, pay for the wall, as Jerry has mentioned, you know, all the things that we've had to do in anticipation of bringing the parking meters to, pay those things back and improve the lighting and all that kinda stuff for the parking meters. So that's moving ahead. And, you know, all I say is to a lot of people, if there's any questions, please give me a call, call Village Hall, and I can answer whatever question you have. And how are new signs working out back there?
What signs, the tent?
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, how many people are parked there and there's less of the trucks, the workers? And I see that they're taking pictures of the driver's license.
Yeah, that's what we're doing over there.
Yeah, I heard, that's why, someone told me.
No, I don't know, I know.
There's about five now just sitting there.
They're just sitting there.
Yeah. But, and then, remember, I guess they couldn't do it, maybe at nine-thirty.
Yes, Joe and I talked about that.
So Abe will be happy, my girl, Lauren, but I don't care, life or out there.
But it opens up that parking lot customers, so.
Hey, I have, right, but I gotta listen to these idiots.
Yeah, I guess, you mentioned that the street signs, which hopefully will be made in the end of this week or next week, obviously before the January second start date. And we're probably just gonna ban the signs and so maybe we get to a little bit of, kinda do what you want, I guess, park where you want.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this is gonna be, well, you know, it's right before the holiday season, we don't worry about people parking. So, you know, I've been dealing with this on a daily basis, speaking with various businesses in town and having meetings with David and talking to David about it. And, you know, it's continuing and it's gonna be, I believe, a successful program for the village and help out the businesses in town. Of course, all these things is growing pains, but I think we'll get through it, through all of those.
Jack.
That's okay. Just one quick question, the signs with the meters, are they just gonna say meter parking this lot and give the times, or?
Once we get the parking, we're not pinned down with the parking lots yet. We're just talking about this on the street right now.
Okay.
So once we get this launched, then we'll move ahead in finalizing plans for what we're gonna do in the parking lots. Because I think the blue and whites that we had put up are helpful. And it's helpful in designating and allocating parking lots. Like if you talk about parking lot five, or you wanna reference parking lot five, nobody would know what you were talking about. Let's say Terry Street, but which part of it is five? So I think as we go along with the process, parking parcels, they're gonna come together and they're both gonna complement each other as we go forward. Yeah, thanks. You have another question, Mark?
No, I was saying that, no.
Okay.
Dennis, one.
Okay, what I'd like to do is request approval to promote Nicholas Zambelli to captain effective January first, two thousand fourteen, at an increase of one dollar per hour. I'd just like to talk about Nick Zambelli and what a great job he does as one of our officers. And needless to say, our violations have gone up in the village, the guys have been doing a great job. Between parking violations and public urinations and those kinda things, we've been handing out a lot more violations, which takes up a lot more time in the backend as far as office work does, you know, processing, we got vehicle impounds, all kinds of stuff. It just creates more paperwork and more man-hours for people to do it. And Nick's doing a great job and he's been here, you know, for quite a few years and has proved himself to be a valuable asset to the village, so. No, I'd like to continue without saying these fantastic individual works. You know, I've worked with him more than anybody and he's just so involved, always there, prepares barricades and really looks ahead of the problem before we get to it, and my compliments to his promotion.
Thank you. Just one, from a legal standpoint, just one addition, if the captain promotion, captain, if the board approves this one, just with, you know, and just to let the minutes reflect more civil service equivalent.
Okay.
More civil service.
Do you want your motion? Second. All right.
Hi.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Just the keys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow board members, ladies and gentlemen. So I don't forget, I wanna wish everybody a happy holiday season, time for people to love them and celebrate. Hope everybody enjoyed it. It's just the other night, great parade, thank you for all of you.
Yeah, it was great. Did Santa show up? Did Santa show up? Santa? Does it look good from the paper, you see? Oh, yeah. Definitely, there was a lot of Santa. But the primary guy was there. He was. I rode on the truck with. Yep.
You got your letter? You got your letter, right?
Yeah, you tell my letter.
I wanna start with the thing that's in your packet that's not on the agenda, Mr. Grine. This is something that Joe and I have been kicking around for a quarter of a while. We started experimenting with the use of the grime on the roads. You know, kinda rigged up the truck our own way and, you know, making it ourselves. And it's not a success, got a little bit of it the second year as opposed to the first. You know, we hope to keep tweaking it and improving it. You know, part of the reason that I'm even gonna propose this is because this could be a season when we might really learn from the professionals, you know, all the real detail that I've done. So we can kinda, you know, make it go along with it. A little bit successful, but, and then we have to decide whether or not we wanna go this way. Initially, obviously, the economics of it was a big factor. But since we engineered that agreement with the county, you know, we're getting the salt. So that's a little less of a factor. I do feel that grime will have cleaning and need a way to do it. So this company is a company that you have on the list, some of the streets that we gave them in sidewalks that we like for them to use as kinda like a trial.
So they would be doing it instead of us, we were doing it ourselves?
These years, they will do it, yeah, in these years. Now, and they may not, this is something, what I wanted to do is really get the authorization to use it in the event that Joe and I decide, you know what, this might be a good time to try these guys.
We have a situation where we can't keep up with it ourselves in the.
Yeah, or we may decide not to use it. No, like I said, we are still kinda kicking whether or not to do that. But winter's here and we don't need again until January. So if something happens between now and January, Joe and I wanna make a decision to, you know, bring these guys in and give it a try, like to have that.
Now, we make the grime ourselves, right?
We make it ourselves.
From salt?
Yeah, salt and water.
So do you know if this company uses the same thing because it says liquid anti-ice melt and de-icers? Or is it some sort of a chemical?
No, it's a grime. It's pretty much the same kinda stuff we use, except they've been doing it like, they're proven it, you know, the professional.
I was just concerned if it's something, if it's chemical.
No, 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 it's not a chemical. Yeah, they're visible, even though, like I said, it's not economics anymore, but it's something that's cleaner and safer, you know.
Joe, if you're doing that from this, if I'm wrong, but if I'm right, it's, if we got a one to three inch snowfall, it's gonna cost us ten thousand dollars?
No, the second, I actually came up with six thousand dollars, but I'm certainly willing to go through it again in case I.
Well, it's ten miles each pass and it's one lane per pass. So that would be twenty miles over the hole for these six streets, times two hundred dollars per, so that's eight thousand.
Well, I was reading it as per lane mile, two miles per lane mile, ten miles is two thousand dollars. Two tests is four thousand dollars for the roads. The sidewalks come to about sixteen, seventeen hundred hours. So I came with fifty-seven hundred hours.
So the first application is applied before the storm hits.
Right, and the second.
So that's four thousand, right? And then the second application is applied when there's a one to three inch of snowfall. So that's eight thousand.
Yeah, that's, no, 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 that's just, that's the two applications. The first application before, then the second one when you enter the one to three area. That's the second application.
So the two hundred dollars per lane mile.
Includes both.
Right. Well, that occasion. Do you have any idea what it costs to throw on a salter?
I don't. You mean our own? What it costs us to do that? No. I would guess that this way may prove to be something less expensive than what we do with painted heads over time and stuff like that. But I haven't said. And we will do that, like I said, this is kinda thing, I'm looking to get the authority. In the event this happens between now and next January, I mean, next, you know, next meeting, you know, if we get a storm, looking to get approved for six thousand dollars. We wanna give these guys a shot. And that will tell us pretty much whether or not.
Right.
You know, then we can actually go through the numbers and find out.
Right.
You know, if it's gonna save us or if it's not worth it. And if not, if nothing else, like I said, I would, I found on having somebody kinda tell these guys what they make and maybe learn whatever we can from them. And then decide if we wanna go through and, you know, really retrofit our trucks expertly or can we get away with the way we've done it? Or do we wanna use them, or, you know, that kinda.
See, they save them, the grime isn't on the front of the job, it's on the back of the job. And the premise being is that you put it down in a liquid state on the street.
Right.
You put it down as just straight salt. If you put it down prior to the storm, the storm doesn't hit, but three hours later, four hours later, normally what happens? It's a salt that just gets pushed off to the side. But by putting it down, the process.
And that's a bend of the water that's eventually to the stuff that we're cleaning.
It stays on and then the plowing becomes easier. And the overtime and the man-hours to remove the snow is reduced.
Yeah, the grime coats, the grime coats it, stay.
The six thousand on the front end may be somewhat more than we would spend if we just went out and sorted it out. But it's during the course of the storm and at the back end, I think, where a lot of the saving comes.
Yeah, I think we find out all that this may be a less expensive way to go and might be just a good opportunity for us to decide that's what we wanna do for the future. You know, we're getting free salt now, but this is a lot cleaner than the. It's not free salt, it's a shampoo service inside.
Right.
Salt for services. So what I'm requesting approval is the authority to spend up to six thousand dollars on Mr. Grine as needed or as we decide whether or not we wanna.
I have one question for you, David. I've heard that this is like more environmentally friendly.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah, that's even why we lean more than economics, which is more environmentally friendly.
Better for the wrong?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a water better for the people who step in it and splashes off and.
Yes, that's exactly right. So that's my motion.
Second. Second. All right.
Thank you. I'm requesting approval to hire Chestnut Fields Association Corporation to repair their bulkhead at the end of Lowell Street at a cost not to exceed eight thousand dollars, which will be reimbursed by insurance. I don't know if you've noticed that they were working at Campbell Street Company replacing that whole bulkhead.
And the Lowell Street, the car accidents, the crumps.
Yeah, yeah.
Go down, roll, and never stop.
And never stop, you'd say, to take the storms and threaten out there.
I think I was the only one that heard it, you didn't hear it, right?
No, I didn't hear it.
You're not feeling warm?
Four o'clock in the morning, no, it teetered at that.
Yeah, four o'clock in the morning was the loudest noise I ever heard in my whole life, like, I couldn't imagine what happened. And then, and it was nothing, no sirens.
He missed the benches.
Right, he missed the bench and then got up at six-thirty and when it got light, there was a brand new Audi, like this. So I called the police and it was a.
You were the first one to call?
Yeah, they abandoned the car.
There's a body in the river.
Wait, did you say? Did you just hear anything?
No, but Joe Russo sent me a picture. And I put it in the trash after a while because what was I gonna do with it? But I know about it. And Joe said, the noise was unbelievable. No, I didn't hear anything, but I can sleep like the dead.
That was the loudest thing I ever heard.
But, but, Tom, did you, no, you guys sleep like the dead too?
Karen might have been up.
Karen might have been up.
And the bulkhead was floating in the middle room.
Yes, it must have whacked. Yes, it must have whacked.
Yeah.
Then the guy climbed out of the car. So take him over the field.
Yeah.
Let's climb to the back window, it's an iron lock.
I have no idea. Because when it shows total snow, it's afterwards. Nobody screamed help, nobody...
We go into his insurance company, okay?
Right. The only thing you could hear was Josephine snoring.
That's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Requesting approval to hire AES Safety Training to provide mandatory OSHA safety data sheet training. At a cost not to exceed 65,000 per person. This is mostly where I understand it, and I think that's in your package as well. Training on how to label chemicals, how to identify chemicals.
Really a job of the internet.
Well, this is...
What they all live through these stuff.
This stuff is a mandatory training kind of thing.
And, you know, talk about it. This should be, you have to stay up at this, because the pool, pool managers should also be involved.
I spoke with Joe about that today, I asked him to make sure each trustee knows that they posted.
Right.
So if you get that email from him, I asked him to do that, and if nothing, you get the two managers, you can call and he'll schedule it on the...
And are you still offering that 10-hour OSHA?
No, I don't, we can't, but we'll probably have to do that again. They did two classes, but I don't think he has any more scheduled. And he did ask me about it.
Yeah, it has to be a walk.
Yeah. And I thought that was going to be posted to everybody too, on 10-hour work. But I'll talk to Joe, link and range him on.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's my motion.
Second.
Second.
And Mr. Mayor, last, I did have one more item. It's time of year again, the holiday season, when everybody's generous and giving and offering bargains and discounts. Opportunity for the village to once more reach deeper in their generous hearts and offer a reduced rate in a bike locker event. We are down to $9.50 a year.
I might keep my bike there, because I have no room for it.
Reduce the key, what do you charge, 20 dollars?
20.
40, that's an outrage, we'll make it 20 dollars.
Done.
And $9.50 to rent a bike locker at the West End and Patchogue train station. I've never offered a better bargain than this, this is really, you better come quickly. Michael, this is your front page news, it's your headline. That's my motion.
Billy, are you going to put your bike there? Wow.
He's going to whip it.
I was thinking, is there cable?
One year free.
Satellite.
What a deal.
I'm there.
Are you reducing it down to $9?
$9.50 and a $20 key.
The five.
The five, thank you very much.
What did you say? I took the Kelly.
Mike?
Yeah, maybe I said people over there that...
Want to slaughter bikes?
Yeah, that's...
Oh, wait, there's a lot of people who may start racing the rate a little bit. No, it's a...
I'm very sure they have, because they have the plots over there.
Okay.
They have bikes and it just...
Not a good idea.
Larry will be very happy.
I'm sure he will be. Did I get second on my motion?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you very much, and with that I say goodnight, again, happy holidays, everyone.
We're not through the MTA, are we?
Not in a long time, no.
Mr. Green?
Just want to wish my colleagues and the rest of the people in attendance and all, everybody, a happy holiday. Make it a healthy new year and a prosperous new year. Just one particular item, you know, Jack made mention about the approval for the theater roof. We had a question that was raised at the last meeting where you were on vacation about how we're going to actually pay for it. Whether we're going to ban it, or whether it was going to just come out of our general fund and then look...
What's it?
Or if you had a clarification on that.
We have three options with it. We can ban it, which is a seven-year payout. It's 350,000, we put $50,000 a year. We can bond it, which then you bond it for whatever the life is, in this group, probably 25 years, whatever that man comes after on 350,000. I don't know how bonding, the cost of bond makes it worth getting a bond unless, and the reason you would do a bond is if we, let's say, the party, let's say, we're making a decision on the next several months, to do, for, say, a million dollars for more, paying in the streets. So you couple together, that million, this 350,000, this piece of equipment, so you would then put together a bond of maybe $10,000 or $1,500, then it would be worth it. The cost of bonding, a million-dollar bond's worth about 80 grand, 75 grand, which is tremendously expensive. And the last is to take it out of surplus. Now, the surplus piece is the interesting ones, because I had said prior to the meeting, I just mentioned to the trustees, that in last year's budget, we ended up with a surplus of about 3.4, 3.5 million dollars. One of the things we weren't allowed to put into our budget, which would have created an additional amount of surplus, was our FEMA reimbursement. FEMA hasn't reimbursed us yet for the funds we paid out for the brush removal and so forth. In fact, they haven't reimbursed us yet for the dock. That's coming pretty close to, I think, really our...
Yeah, we haven't reimbursed for Irene, which, that brush removal.
Right. Well, brush removal, we got Irene, Irene, you know, but... But that is, that's about $400,000. So if that comes in this bunch of, that's what our discussion on this board is, it'll be the board discussion. Do we want it, that will do it in surplus? Do we want to do it surplus? Do we want to do it over seven years? Or do we want to take a look at other ideas that we need, and other repairs and other issues we want to deal with, such as more money's put in place for roads. I know Joe's got a bunch of equipment, I think he's got a payload that is getting old and maybe needs some replacement. So we may couple together and put together a bond. So those are the three options we have. We don't need to get to those options. Because one of the benefits of carrying the surplus that we have is we can do the roof and initially pay it out of surplus. And if we decide to either ban, bond, ban or bond, then reimburse our surplus for that. So it'll take a month, month and a half for the roof to...
It's not a month.
So that's like an April decision? Pay probably, probably then doesn't happen until June of the following year. So we really don't even have, we wouldn't even go into next year's budget, we'll go into budget of 15. So there's, like I said, we're in a very fortunate position, because we're fiscally very stable. And one of the issues and the reasons we may want to consider banning or bonding is with the double A rating, you're probably going to get money for, I don't know, what, 2%, 2.5%?
Pretty cheaply for determining what we're asking.
Yeah. So if they're going to give you money for 2%, 2.5%, and you have the ability to pay it down over time, that's, use this advice on that also.
Well, one of the reasons why I raise that, obviously, there are costs of borrowing money. And for $314,000, it wouldn't make sense to bond that project untold. But the thought that I'm coming to mind with is, we're, you know, we have quite a few people that come to visit the theater every year. There's a whole host of different promoters that come and rent out the theater. We promote our own events as well. And what I'd like to consider is setting a fee per ticket for infrastructure maintenance of the theater.
Because you get seats to the theater also.
Right, there's not only seats, but there'll be, you know, this is an asset that we want to keep maintained and continue to own for years to come. We should create a revenue stream from the visitors and the patrons that come to the theater. It's a very valuable asset, it's undeniable what the economic benefits are to the community. But to ask the village resident taxpayer to come up with that money, I think it's imbalanced. And I think that a fee, like any other fee, that a consumer who pays, if you're running a business, should be passed on to the patrons or the consumer that visit the business, or, you know, buy service. You know, those costs are passed down to, you know, the consumer. So what I'd like, I don't know whose authority would be to set that fee, but whether it's $2, $3, $5 per ticket, I think it should be set for each event where we can create a revenue stream for ongoing costs of maintaining the theater. So would that be set from our board, Brian, or is that from the Patchogue Theater Board?
Yeah, clearly, the non-profit theater board sets the prices, we don't set the price. You can impose something on them to a certain extent, but, you know, it's a request or a demand. But they definitely, as the independent board that's under contract to run that theater, they set the prices.
Right now, we're, excuse me, Tom, go ahead. Right now, we are raising a certain amount of money per ticket for, I believe it's Mr. Ashline's salary. And, you know, whether you're charging $38 per ticket, or whether you're charging $40 or $45 per ticket, I think if it's a marketable event, they'll still be able to sell tickets. So it would be a suggestion that Jack and I could bring back to that theater board and see if we can make a revenue stream from these theater patrons, as opposed to having those costs, you know, paid by the residents themselves.
Would that be used to pay the note? Or be used to...
Well, if that is the option that we're going to consider on financing the, you know, the ban of the theater roof, we could go towards that. But there'll always be something for that theater. You know, whether it's the seats, or whether it's the sound equipment, or whether it's the toiletries that need to be, you know, replaced, whatever. It's, there's always going to be ongoing maintenance of that asset, so...
It's a great idea.
So it's something I think we should definitely consider.
And what you set up is, you set up a capital fund, you know, then you put it towards that.
There's a real division of responsibility right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Jack. The theater board operates the theater. So they bring in acts, they set the prices, but they're not responsible for the physical, the capital aspect of the theater.
Correct.
We are, the villagers. So having a left, you know, if there's 120, 130,000 a year, every year, and we just had a buck, or two bucks, I mean, a $200,000 revenue stream will maintain that theater in pristine condition, capital-wise.
We're talking...
Thank you, Jack. That's all I have to say, Mr. Green.
Thank you. Mr. Steve.
I need a voice. Fellow trustees, mayor, public, I've got a couple of quick things today, old personnel matters. Request approval to accept the resignation of Robert Geiser as ordinance inspector in the building department. That's a motion.
The two bits?
Second.
Second.
Secondly, request approval to hire Robert Wallbauer as ordinance inspector in the building department at $15 per hour.
Bubble, bubble.
It's an hard-time job, so I mean, you know...
We would be back.
Put your hand there, will you?
White-crowned picket.
You get a second. You guys are trying to make this meeting as long as Jack's the last one.
Just slow it in.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, request approval to increase Steve Sinicor's salary to $15 per hour, which is an increase of 59 cents per hour.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Mr. Green?
Good evening, everyone. Recently, I had the opportunity to meet with Michelle Stark from Southern County. She heads up the Department of Cultural Affairs and Film and Workforce Housing. And it was a meeting about the monies that come from hotel motel tax. And those monies that come in are dedicated solely toward artistic endeavors in the county. So it was very interesting, I have a list here, and these are grants, I have all the grants for the county, but I'll just bring the ones that come in to Patchogue. And these are actually line items that our legislator, Al Calarco, proposes, and then when the other legislators vote if they're elected, they are put into the budget. They're not just blanket grants, it's not, for instance, you get a sum of money and you do whatever you want with it. For instance, because I'm on the board of the Patchogue Arts Council, I know that when that money comes in, it's specifically for a specific use, which is running the galleries. So Patchogue Arts Council has to provide the county with the documentation and the expenditures, et cetera, et cetera. But I thought it was great to see that we have, excuse me, I'm on the red page. We have the Patchogue Theater for the Performing Arts gets $10,000 from the hotel motel tax. Patchogue Historical Society gets $10,000. For the first time, Plaza Cinema and Media Arts Center is getting $25,000. And the Patchogue Arts Council gets $15,000. So it's nice to see the way that money is being used for economic development and how it's been in the community. But that's not all. This year, they also have some other funds, and what they're doing is they have two grant opportunities of $25,000 each. So there's $50,000 total, which is two pools of money. The only people that can compete for this money are the eight arts councils. So the eight arts councils are going to be competing against each other, and the name of the grant is called Destination Downtown. In order to participate in a grant, the arts council needs to have a partner such as a BID, so I've already spoken to Dennis. And so what we're hoping to do is to find a location for the year-delayed Patchogue Arts Biennial and compete with that little money. So Dennis and I have talked about some properties, we'll keep that under our hat, and I'll try and muscle a few landlords to let us use the space, but we'll see. We'll see what happens. In the meantime, we're going to write that grant. The other good news is there's additional grant monies, and if there are other types of arts organizations in Summit that aren't not, they're not 501(c)(3)'s. Let's say the art is from ArtSpace. There's grants of up to $1,000 to $5,000 that those organizations can apply for, they have a specific, you know, a specific event. So let's say, for instance, when we were talking with Dave Rogers at ArtSpace about doing that there, he can apply for that money, the Arts of ArtSpace, if they get with the Chamber and the Greater Patchogue Foundation, they can go out for up to $5,000, and then those funds would be administered by an arts council. So it's a very exciting meeting, and there's a lot of good things that will be happening for the Arts in County.
Trustee?
No, yeah, no, I was just saying, I'm on that topic. I have request approval to appoint Michael Vigliata as a full member of the Planet Gorge. That's a motion.
Second.
And I have some things, and I'll write it down, so I'll just go on. That's it? Well, the house tour was great. That was, the Garden Club's Christmas house tour was fantastic. Yeah, it really was nice. Carol Butler was on the tour again over at Ace Patchogue, her home was fantastic. Kellie Geyer, ArtSpace was open, I had the, well, did you go through? A lot of the studios were open, so it was very nice. ArtSpace has their gift show up right now, and there's a reception on December 14th. So if you're interested in buying some contracted dating Patchogue artistic items for the holidays, you can probably stop at any hours that they're open, but the reception is next Saturday at 6 o'clock. And then finally, Plaza Mac is closed right now because they're installing their digital equipment, but they will be reopening on December 26th. We don't know what the film is yet, but it will be a first-rub independent film. So typically, they were getting second-rub films, now they're going to be getting films at the same time as they break in the town. So that'll be, so, 26th, and they'll be running the films for three weeks, so each film will run for three weeks.
Mr. Mayor, board, and guests, we've had the very successful Christmas parade. We once again brought it in under two hours. The five departments somewhat cooperated with cutting down on excessive apparatus. And just a couple of problems that I'm throwing out there. I know people are always trying to think of ways to improve the parade and the lineup as well. But the problem we have is when the parade is coming down Main Street, somebody steps in front of another person, then they step in front of that person, and by the end of the... And by the end of the parade, and even halfway, you get a tunnel effect. People getting closer and closer and closer to the, to the floats and to the trucks. And we have to think of a way to try to beat them back. Other than barricades, I don't like barricades. They're very, you don't like barricades.
Very barricadish.
Yeah. So people can think, other than maybe have service organizations, I don't know if there are laws to do that. It's a problem that has to be fixed and need help and trying to think of a solution.
Trying to do that for fifty years.
I know, but it's getting worse. And the vendors, they've had it. They have had it. They will, they refuse to stay on the sidewalk. I know I changed that a couple of years ago. Absolutely refused. They absolutely refused to show their permits. They refused to do anything.
How do they get permission to come into the parade?
They have to apply for a permit through my office.
And it's one or all recourse to just deny them the request? They need to be, they need to show a permit to...
Well, you're talking about the same side. Are you on the vendors who do not have permits?
I'm talking...
Not the vendors who do.
Bill, you're saying that they're refusing to show? So we do next year. We'll get the code guy, and we'll get a Southern PD guy. He's having to walk down, and every single vendor, if they don't have it, we'll have the police officers direct to him, or if they refuse, we'll give them a violation for the whole. We'll take care of it.
Well, because we have...
We'll sit down with the code next year.
And my, over the years, my concern has always been to keep them on sidewalks.
Yeah.
Because what happens is that Paul Mestrelis, who could see something, was running out. So he jumps to the east, stops his shopping cart in front of a float. He cannot pass. Meanwhile, the kids are out buying stuff.
Yep.
And it's horribly dangerous, and also it's most annoying. So...
And I just have one observation in terms of safety. And I don't want to pick on any particular, but on my end, going back, the group with the hot dogs?
Yes.
I mean, there were a couple of them.
We banned them from next year.
Yeah. They were, I mean, muscling down. All you needed was a slip of the foot, and that was going to slam into the ground.
No, they didn't, they didn't get banned for one year.
Okay. Was that what they, sorry, everybody got?
We got a lot of reports on that. So something you don't like to do, but they definitely violated. We were smoking the tires, and it was horrible.
Not, not necessarily.
Fifty's anniversary, the kid's anniversary is what's next.
Oh, the Mustang tires.
Yeah, it's fifty, yeah, you banned?
Well, it should be worth it.
They were a year off then.
Last weekend, some, yes, yesterday was the Quanis Live Day, what was that? Six hundred and eighty-two finishes right now. You went down, see, it was...
It's fantastic.
Did you freeze?
It was a bit chilly.
Yes.
Not as chilly as it was in, I'm sure you blew that down.
Oh, I imagine. And thank you to the judges.
They did a fabulous job.
Yes. Just Don here? Don did a fabulous job as well. So how did people like the race yesterday?
We got a lot of positive response.
New course? Cut it off the mainstream, we closed Waverly.
And I have to say that they were so organized with the parking. They had so many volunteers from my house, because they use, right around the field. They had a young girl dressed all costumey and all the Santa Claus with a sign to go in, and they pulled everybody in. And it seemed about ten fifteen, everybody was coming at once, but they handled it fantastic. They really were very organized.
That's great. Well, thank you for helping out. That was great.
You're welcome.
And the Quanis Club definitely does have a doing five K. That was great. Mr. Mayor, the last couple of meetings, we've had some discussions on the public drunkenness and carry-ons of the emporium patrons and the parking on Railroad. I've spoken to some of the residents of that area and have, would like to sedate the whole public hearing regarding no parking on the west side of Railroad between South Street and Union.
Get, get hold it down? Just on the west side?
On the west side.
Being a party altogether?
Or resident?
Resident park.
Resident park.
Resident park.
Right.
Permit park.
Permit park.
Permit.
Non-resident.
If they have permits, right. So that's a motion.
Second.
Do it the first January thirteenth or the twenty-seventh?
First and twenty.
Thirteenth.
We got those, two years ago, we'd gotten petitions from that. Thank you for that.
And the only thing I have left on my agenda is to request approval for the annual Great South Bay Music Festival, which I would like, not like to do tonight. I, this is the first I've heard of that.
They just set the dates just to secure the weekend. They know that they have to meet the PD. This is just to secure the weekend. There's a lot of other things that have to go into it.
So it's three dates, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
As always.
Yeah. Okay, I've heard discussion otherwise.
No, they've been talking about wanting to do it Thursday.
Right.
Yes, I'm meeting with him later this week to talk, probably to talk about what these are the dates with it and secure it.
Okay. So Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, just to reserve a date. Motion to request approval to reserve the dates of July eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth for the great annual South Bay Music Festival, with the understanding that this is just the reserving dates and it's not a pool or the event itself.
Bill, how much have we, will we pay from the modems on that?
Eighty-five hundred dollars.
And that probably are expensive. Are we due to get any additional payments from that?
Possibly. There's a, we're still negotiating the fact that they had to reimburse some ticket holders. Well, we don't feel that that's our problem. The rain, one, one day, one day.
There was a lightning event?
Right.
That they had to clear the property, which they did, died in this job of...
They did. And it was only through the Peter, Sarah, just meetings were down to go over that evacuation that it went so well. But we're still trying to collect that money. Which is a huge concern of mine, which is why I want to hold off on, or the event itself.
Right, that's what...
Because we can't continue, actually, last year, we, we made all the money. It was funded to ticket sales. We got, you know, a certain amount from ticket sales. This year, we didn't. We didn't break even. Cost. It cost us around ninety-five hundred dollars to put, just to put the event on. Cold Park's highway and ticket fees. And we have to cover that.
Well, it's a fabulous event. People come from all over the island to enjoy the festival. Just, you know, I know we've had these discussions in the past, and just, you know, want to make sure that we have at least a large percentage of our cost coming. So, so, yeah, I wouldn't mind reserving the dates as long as there's a continuing conversation about how we get that.
Well, covering a large percentage, yes. But you could fly on the wall in my house when I, you know, I just go bonkers. Because it's a very intense event for us to put on. And we should enjoy some spoils of which we are yet to achieve. We, what we did was we started a Cinderella program, for lack of a better word, to help them get started. And we still have not achieved the full potential of what it costs. This is going to be the year. Well, next year, the dollar ticket price goes up to two dollars for a ticket. So...
That's removed.
That's removed. But for the time being, definitely, this open discussion, that's why I was hesitant to put the event.
Hope to be heard. Second.
We got, we netted eighty, we grossed eighty-five hundred bucks. Had a bunch of tickets.
Yes.
All right, I have one more thing real quick. I want to, would like to request approval to set a public hearing to revise the legislation in the signage chapter on sandwich boards. I'll be ready to address that on January thirteenth.
Motion second. All right, okay. Public speaker. Chair of the right here?
Good evening. My name is Dennis. And you have...
Listen, Dennis?
I'm sorry?
Listening? Listening?
I go by Z, Dennis Z. Z Y B as in boy, U R O. And you'll have to excuse me, I lost my voice and I lost a hundred percent of my hearing. And this year, it's seventy-five percent, yes, August fourteenth. So just be patient with me.
Absolutely. Do you live here in the village? Your address?
No, but I shop here.
No.
I go to lunch.
I don't have any problem. We just need, for the record...
Yes, okay.
Just need your address.
And I enjoy the town of Patchogue. I live at seven Monterey Lane in Yap Hank, one-one-nine-eight-O.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've lived here for the last eleven years, and we come, my wife and I come to Patchogue quite frequently to use the restaurants and shopping. So we do support the village of Patchogue. And what I'm about to bring up is from the heart and my concern. Okay? I'm a former educator, and I took classes in safe school and safe community sponsored by the military and police department. It made me aware of surroundings as well as growing up in New York City. I know one of my friend's sheriffs tried to sneak up on me, and I turned around right away. So you kind of learn to have ice behind your head. I don't mean to brag, but because of certain incidences, I was the first person in the United States to start the crisis team. And I really would hate to see that happen in the village of Patchogue. And I'll address that. I also was a former insurance agent and specialized in selling auto home, life, long-term disability, nursing home. And this made me awareness and educated. In addition, I built several homes that have become aware of safety rules and regulations. My main concern is this beautiful complex that's being built on Main Street and Ocean Avenue, plus, I guess you would consider it four blocks, four sides of it.
Four corners, yep.
And it's the safety. I was walking by, and I looked up, and in line with the sidewalk in the street are the, is the roof and the Patchogue roof. And I took some photos, and I brought it to the attention of the building inspector. So I felt it was necessary to approach the council. And I've heard many good things about all of you. It appears the roof extends over the sidewalk, a very concerned about the safety of pedestrians, people driving their cars, motorcycles, bikes, children riding their skateboards, parents wheeling their children. If icicles, snow, sleet, slush fall from the roof and hit a pedestrian, a word about the liability, that's when my insurance came in. And I'll give you an example. My nephew lost his leg in East of Target in an accident twenty-five years ago. And the settlement twenty-five years ago was three million dollars. Okay? When I look at the municipal property and liability policy, which I have, and I'm sure you have it also, I'm shocked that there's only one million dollars of liability and two million aggregate. In my opinion, this is outdated. And talking to several other towns, they have a lot more liability coverage. And today, you hate to use the word, but people are too crazy. And health insurance is expensive, if a person gets hurt, the medical costs. I'm also stunned at the premium, a hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty, forty-eight dollars and ninety cents. And I was just asking this wonderful woman if she carried an umbrella policy. And your answer was?
Yes, two million.
And how much is your premium?
A little under four hundred dollars.
Okay, now, I realize in the insurance business, you have a wide spread of risk because of the whole town, which makes the premium higher. So I'm sure most of you carry a million-dollar umbrella policy. I truly recommend that you get three companies to get, give a bit, because they can vary. And in my past experience, and I shouldn't bring this up, but the salesman normally made fifteen percent, which equals seventeen thousand dollars in commission. And that's a lot of commission. And we're only getting, you're getting, a one-million-dollar liability policy. I hope you take this into consideration. And the other thing that I was doing, I was walking by the construction site. And I kind of, I'm kind of like a global person. I like to know what's going on in the world today. And I had interviewed one of the construction workers. And we preached that we want to keep the money in the town, whether it's Yap Hank, the town of Brookhaven, whether it's Patchogue. I interviewed one of the construction workers, and he informed me half of the people employed are from out of state. So we are not, I don't know if this is true.
It's not true.
Okay. So that I, I have no, that's what, hearsay.
Maybe, maybe have a trade.
I'm sorry?
One of the trades, maybe, one of the concrete trades I know was from other states because they did tension, the cables in the concrete. They're the only company that does it on East Coast.
Yeah, he had mentioned something about four components and one or two were outsourced. You know more about that. I, I wouldn't know anything about that.
In fact, a lot of the tradesmen and the product that they used to build the project is made right here on Long Island.
Well, that's great to get, I'd like to hear that.
The basin rework, the lumber comes from Long Island Companies. It's prefabricated, I think, in Bohemia. That was actually a few, is it close to there?
It's up on one-twelve.
Oh, right. Okay, so...
I'd like to hear that. But thank you for saying that, because I started to say, you know, you hear these horrible national stories. But once again, I really, I, I'm shocked at the premium. I mean, just the doubles of premium. I mean, if you up the liability, I'm saying two-hundred-and-thirty thousand in premium, that's a lot of premium if you double the liability. But maybe by shopping around, something, maybe a better bid would come out. So thank you for your time.
I appreciate it.
Have happy holidays.
You too, son.
Thanks.
Happy, healthy, merry. I saw that, that, from Yap Hank, I saw that flyer that was in the paper of the church. The church fire at Yap Hank?
I didn't see that yet.
The Presbyterian Church, eighteen fifteen, yeah. It was on the one on Main Street, I learned the other night.
I don't know. We always see horrible stories, but let's have a Merry Christmas.
Good evening, John, George, I did not succeed in my holiday gift. There's one question.
Carnegie and Iber, I'm saying there's a survey that's still hasn't been completed, is that the case?
No, everything's, I talked to you today.
Survey has not been completed? The survey of what? Electrical survey, or property survey? Oh, no, that's longer.
It's done, we go over to the county.
Yeah, we needed a legal description. I mean, that's not the survey, the surveyor had to read out the legal description, or he takes the meets and bounds and puts them into English language. That was done, and that's over to the county for their completion of the contract to sell it.
You know when it was done?
That was done about two weeks ago, a little week ago.
A week ago?
Yep.
Okay, and that's the last piece? So it's now totally in the county's hands?
The survey itself was done way back when we sub bought the property in October, summer? Yeah, no, the survey was completed, the legal description was not, so the survey was done.
Okay, so...
They needed that for their transfer.
Correct, Schedule A, the legal description.
And we're reading later this week to the client of trial, we'll do it today. And sit at the library and just kind of settle out all of the pieces. Once that's done, the county has to do their, pass their motion, transfer to us, then we transfer to...
That's already done. The county's resolution is already finished, which is for them to actually get their closing and transfer it to us. Once that's done, then we can complete the transfer to the library. Right.
The county process is a forever process, it seems like, it's frustrating. But I, hopefully, within the next four or five weeks, this week.
Four or five weeks? All right, it's not a fire on fire, but I understand the library's potential funding has also got some time limits too, so...
No, it doesn't, that might, in terms of the grant they got?
The grant that they're going to get.
What's that?
The grants that they want to get.
I don't know about, they have one grant already.
Yes, I know, but I believe there's other grants there.
Well, I don't know about that, they have...
Yeah, well, I don't, it's not a fire on fire, but there is a time window for them too, so that's why I've been sort of coming to here and asking what's going to happen.
I haven't shared that with me, I haven't heard that. Your lawyer didn't tell me that.
Well, you know, I'll speak with them, I'll speak to persons who spoke to me, and ask them to speak to you.
Have you been able to include that telephone check?
All right, and have a holiday, so...
You too. Merry Christmas.
Any other comments? Wish everybody a happy, healthy, merry, we don't have another meeting this one. Next meeting's January...
Thirteenth.
A happy, healthy, merry, and joy. Dave, do you need a second?
Sure.